Records clicked. Welcome to today's session, Tally Rehabilitation. This is the fourth in the series of sessions around a rapid introduction to the use of Tally delivery. I'm Fee Graham, I'm with the Rehabilitation Teaching and Research Unit, the RTIU, and based here in Wellington, New Zealand. Today, the focus of today's sessions is on ideas around delivering group work in the context of an Italian environment. It's very much going to be a show, tell and try session today, and with a few, a few kind of ideas to sort of focus up that discussion from myself to start with. So, the, in brief, the focus there today is just around some key concepts, show and tell, and, and try it out, and ways of keeping on learning and keeping on connected. Already, you will have, between everyone, you will have many times over the amount of experience I personally have had in Tally, Tally, Tally Health delivery. The majority of my experience has been in Tally teaching rather than Tally health, but I have as a researcher looked, been involved in a series of studies around Tally delivery. So it's that modest expertise that I create this opportunity for us all today. So three key principles in group work, so that's working with groups of clients together in a way that they're in some sort of shared learning situation. Are the ideas around engagement? High, high levels of engagement puts people in situations of deeper learning. This is not going to be necessarily anything super new to you as a concept, as a therapist and somebody that's experienced in group work, but it's about thinking about how we do these things in that Tally health environment. So engagement, the more highly immersed a learner is in what they are learning about, the, the deeper the shifts in the way that they then see the world, and therefore the actions that they choose to take, that behavioural change stuff tends to happen. So engagement and experience. When a learner can experience the learning concept that we're trying to share, they are more likely to have a more profound learning experience that affects the way that they see the world, and they see themselves in this health situation more deeply. So you might remember the, I think it's an old Chinese saying about, "I, I, I heard it, I saw it, or I did it", is three different ways of thinking about types of learner experiences. And generally speaking, when people have experienced it, it takes them from that superficial level of, of learning, of, of knowledge, learning about something, to actually experiencing it and feeling for themselves what that's like. And, and third, I think a really, another really key point is that when people are enjoying it, and, you know, we think about this often with young people, but actually for anybody, when people are in a really pleasant learning situation, they're again, more likely to be immersed in it. And I could have added to this as well, when people are in interaction with others, although some of us are introverts and some of us are extroverts, where it comes to learning in such a way that we're applying that learning, that we're going to do something different in their life, which is what most of us are, are concerned with in rehabilitation, that people go off and act differently, then when we learn in a, in a social context, so with interaction with others, we are also more likely to engage in deeper learning, because that interaction with others is often how we make sense of our world, and it's part of embedding different ways of seeing the world and thinking about things. Rarely does a very wholly didactic kind of learning experience really, you know, blow people's hair back, really, really get them enjoyed, as the kind of classic droning lecturer epitomises. So as we've done in the other sessions, I'm going to practise what I'm preaching here, and I'm going to drop you into some breakout rooms, and, which are small group rooms, where you're going to discuss with each other, something that you've done in the Tally health space that's familiar to you over this past week, something new that you've tried out that's different, and a lesson that you've learned. So there's three things, something familiar, something new, and a lesson learned. So I'm going to drop you now into breakout rooms, one moment. So recording restarted. So what we'd often do is get everyone to, some people to share, or one person from each group to share those ideas back in the larger group. There'll be some people that are really comfortable sharing in the small group, but not in the larger group, and small group just gives that sort of small group space, just in a, in a, in a live presentation, where more people get the opportunity to share the ideas. Because of the size of today's group, we're not going to do that as a whole group. But what I do want you to do is post your, post some of your ideas, whoa, not that one, post some of your ideas of your experiences, of your, oh, lessons learned, let me do that again, lessons learned, on, into the chat box. Something you did that was familiar, that felt comfortable, and something that was new and lessons learned. So over the last couple of weeks, we've done this exercise at the start of the session, and there is also a web-based, sort of like a discussion board, or share, you know, text-based sharing that's available. Those two links there, that's called Airtable, is the name of the web-based platform. You don't need to download anything, you just go to that website, and you can anonymously, or put your name if you want to, post what your lessons learned are. If you go to the second link there, you'll see what other people have posted. You might have done this already the other week, and you might want to do that again this week, and just notice how you've moved on. And also, people that have watched the recordings of the session have also gone in. So if you weren't able to make my therapy time, you weren't able to make that education slot, you could still participate, you could potentially make your group-based learning situation something that was not just limited to having to be at somewhere at a particular time, at a particular, in a particular place, that you could take part in it through, through a recording that might be shared to a closed group. You can also just use the chat box, and that, for the sharing ideas, like some of you are doing now, and that also works really well. It's a very gen-wise sort of way of thinking about it, you know, when, in the days when I went to school, you were always sort of told off to, you just had to sit and give your dedicated attention to the teacher and, and not be doing anything else. But in reality, people like to pass notes, they like to whisper to each other during a conference, don't they? You talk through your, your immediate sort of reflections and opinions around what's being done, and the chat box is one way that you can allow that to happen. You can do private messages in there, you'll notice that when you go, when, when you go to send something, there's a group, there's the names, I think, pretty amazing, but I think all of the names, yeah, everybody that's signed on today, whatever name they signed on with is there. So you can do a little private message, if you want to make a comment about how ugly the curtains are behind me, or you want to do a message to the group around just discussing your reflections on what it is that you're, what it is that you're thinking in, in real time. So, if we think first of all about the idea of engagement that I talked about a moment ago, one way that you can do this, I'm demonstrating with Zoom, but many of you, which, which a lot of people seem to be using for their Tally delivery, there are other options, and there'll be similar types of functions available on most, on other platforms as well. So down the bottom of your screen, one option for engagement is the emoticons. Now, there's, they call them reactions here. So if you are liking what you're hearing so far, you might like to do some clapping. If somebody's made a point that you're really interested in, have a play around with them by all means. They don't have a thumbs down option, which is really interesting, and I think that sometimes people can take this positive psychology stuff too far. Is it, you could use it as a sort of weather report, so thumbs up if it's been a good week, you know, no thumbs up if it's been an average week or something like that, as a way for getting your group members to engage in a really low-threatening kind of way, quite early on in the, in the, in the learning session. You know, when you're doing live teaching or live group work, some people just love it, the extroverts, they're out there, they're sharing their opinion and they're talking early on, and the introverts or the people that are, you know, whatever, less confident at this point in time or shy, they might say less. So what happens, what sometimes happens in, you manage that dynamic as a, as a, you know, as the therapist, as the group leader, what can happen in a Tally, in a web-based situation is, though, it can become just a little bit more polarised, in my experience, because there's a really big difference between being the one that's speaking and then not speaking. You know, it's, it's a wee bit more of a level playing field when you're all in this room of 20 people altogether. And that can, that can amplify over time, that distance. So the people that don't engage and say much early on are increasingly say, say little and little, and you've, we're very unlikely to get them to put themselves out and say stuff, you know, by the fifth session, fourth, fifth session, if they haven't done it in the first few sessions. So thinking about ways that, in really low-threat formats, encourage everyone to, to engage together in the group from early on is, is something that's on our agenda in the, in the Tally health group space. Now, the other thing to think about, that you often don't think about so much in live group work, is that group, group forming kind of stage. So we would need to strategically grade that level of exposure that the participant puts themselves through in a Tally health situation, much more consciously than we do in a, in a, in a live situation. Obviously, if you're used to doing group work with vulnerable groups, you probably do already think about this sort of stuff quite a lot. But Tally health, you don't want to leave that to chance, because somebody starts to get, gets into a passive role, increasingly difficult to get them out, them, out of them, and then they'll just disengage, "I'm not learning anything from this", and they'd rather watch a few YouTube videos, or something that's really non-engaging, non-interactive, which works for some people, but is less likely to be associated with behaviour change, them doing things differently in their life. So really brief, initial, low-level exposure, something like the emoticons, something like some really ask, posing some specific question that they answer in the chat box. So if I was to turn to Jill here, who's on my screen, Jill Ebb, to share with us all what her week's been like, I'm not going to do that, Jill, but if I just notice the change in your heart rate as I said that, and imagine that that was you, so there's a really high level of exposure with these people that you, you hardly know, you know, you're like walking into a party with, that's really busy, you can tell, and you've got sunglasses on, you can't see hardly anybody, and suddenly you're handed the microphone, you know, to speak to the crowd. So really, we want to avoid that type of situation, that's very much, we're grading the person into that level of exposure, and offering choice about whether they do, and some, at some of the time, and whether, whether they do speak up and take part. If they're rigid with fear, then they're not going to be necessarily doing really deep learning. So another way that you can do it too, is thinking about, how do we start this group norming phase, even before we've set the meeting, even before the meeting date, even the time of the meeting? So one way that you can do that is using something like Padlet, you, I think you can use Airtables for this sort of thing as well, the links are later in the, the presentation today, where people introduce themselves. So I've got one that I prepared earlier, that I borrowed from some of my other teaching. And this is what it looks like. So, sheer screens. So here, let's get that out of the way. Can you see there? It's kind of like a notice board. So I chose a picture on the background, and people, this was in relation to the course that we're at, so people starting to get to know each other before the group has even started. So they just post something about themselves that they feel like sharing. Throwing something in there that's a bit fun is quite good as well, fun fact, something most people don't know about you, that you're happy to share, or, and then some information that might be relevant to building networks between the group members. So if it's around, if this is a group around child disability, for example, then something about how many kids I've got at home, who's at home with me, kind of thing, you know, and, and where, where I live, what suburb I live in, that sort of thing, that gives people an opportunity to build connections. Stop that share. Where was I? So, yeah, building up that level of exposure. So going from that really non-confrontational, post something, through to get into small groups and introduce yourself is the, is, you know, one of the first things, use that, those breakout rooms, not so small that there's real high pressure to sort of say something, but not so big that it takes up too much time and everybody's going to get a bit lost with maybe some more dominant speakers in the group. And another thing to, that we can do is then, as a model, that introduction ourselves first of all, and to then go into small groups. I didn't actually, I do that to start with, but you know, this week I learnt how to use Facebook, how amazing that I'm even, I'm kind of, I'm super embarrassed to say that, but I've never, I'm only interested in it for its work purposes. So I've learnt how to use Facebook this week. So that's a pretty embarrassing fact, really, to be sharing in this kind of environment. So it sort of gives everyone a bit of licence to sort of share their foibles over the week, and, and whatever else was really going on in those small group discussions. So modelling is again, that's a tool you will be familiar with already, it's just thinking about how am I doing that within a Tally health environment? So, uh, now, I've touched on a little bit already, that shift between being a really passive learner, sitting and listening, old bad school lecture style, and to being an active learner, and how that shift is just a little bit harder to make within a Tally health delivery than it is in an in-person group. So one thing, one, one idea to consider is saving the, the group time for wholly interactive experiences. And instead of having your lecture part, like a really common format is to kind of have that lecture format of, here's my content, this is what the sensory systems do, whatever, this is the kind of key features of dyspraxia, and then some sort of activity, some sort of interactive activity. Now, one idea, first of all, keep that, keep that information as short as you possibly, as we possibly can, that sort of one-way information sharing. And secondly, is think about, does it really need to be delivered in this lifetime? This might be a question too, for thinking about the kind of people that you're, you're, that are at your group, how do they best digest information? Maybe offering a couple of different choices around that as well. So pre-recording that formal teaching, teaching time, now there's some really cool way, things to think about when we are delivering that, delivering information as such, that flip that lecture idea on its head, things like the TED Talk format, or picture-coach information delivering, where there's like one key message, and then we sort of unpack the information around that key message, but the key message is central, rather than kind of plodding through a series of content, which is what, how many of us have experienced education, if not higher education, doesn't really fit that well with what we know about how adults learn best. Sometimes it's the best that you can do with 17-year-olds who have limited life experience, and you're teaching 300 of them at once. But for us and most of the client groups that we're working with, they've got very intensive and recent lived experiences of this thing, that you are there to, you know, run this group around. And so very much drawing on that lived experiences, the strengths and resources within that, and then adding information to those experiences that they've already had, would be much more consistent with what we know about learn, adult learning and behaviour change. So consider pre-recording content. Now, honestly, when I first heard this concept, it took me about five years to think, get past the horror of sitting myself in a dark room, looking at a picture of myself, and delivering this content. Maybe you don't even need the, didn't need it. What I did need, the picture of yourself. When I did do it, instead of my lecture starting with, what is disability and rehabilitation, and going through a few definitions of there, and then plodding my way through the World Health Organisation framework, instead, I started with a picture, a bit like what Rita's got behind her, but I'd inserted a picture of the, in fact, I've still got it here on my choice of virtual backgrounds, probably won't work because I'm in this dodgy, I've got these dodgy curtains going on. Oh no, it's not there now, never mind. And nice background, me in Bhutan with these amazing mountains, and I said, "Hi, I'm speaking with you today from the mountains of sunny Bhutan, it's amazing, the fresh air is amazing, and that snow on the hillside, it's blowing into my faces. Now today, we're going to be talking about some of the ideas around disability and rehabilitation, and I've just met this amazing guy down the road called Freddie", whatever his name was, "and who's thriving with high levels of disability in Bhutan". Now, it's going to take us 20 minutes or so before he's free, and in that time, I'm just going to run through a couple of ideas with you before I introduce you to Freddie. So, teaching in that kind of way, do you know, I crammed my 90-minute lecture into 20 minutes, working at that kind of pace, and when somebody's watching a static recording, it needs to be fairly engaging. We talk at a different kind of pace, we have less sort of, it's less useful to have those gaps in the information. And then, when we did meet together as a class, we spent some time talking about some of the ideas that were shared in that video, and did a bunch of activities around it. So instead of having that issue of, okay, get the energy back up again, after they've just spent 20 or 30 minutes listening to me, plot on about something, they were, they maintained, the students maintained this active learning state throughout the, the lecture. One thing that I noticed as the presenter, and this might be a really interesting thing for you to play around with, is what I noticed was, I was much less tired at the end of the teaching session, when I had organised it around engagement, student engagement and interaction, as opposed to the information sharing model. When I'm sharing information for 60 or 90 minutes, I come away from that feeling quite tired, okay? I've just spent time putting the energy out, keeping the energy up, doing the talking. When people are really interactive, it's more, it's like the, the student is doing the work, rather than the lecturer. Now, that doesn't, we, as a lecturer, the good thing about that is not that I get a bit more of a break, the good thing about that is that the student is much more actively engaged in the learning. And they're doing that in a self-driven way, rather than in a really externally driven way with my, you know, use of voice and hand gestures and animations and things, and fancy slides. So student engagement. On that note, I really need to get you doing something right now. We're going to, I'm going to show you this, another tool that you can use. Now, this is one called polls within Zoom. Again, it's a really low-key way to get people to get engaged. So I've got a poll here. If you've, if you went to uni through the 90s, late 90s, early noughties, they used what they called clicker technology, and they actually used to have this manual thing that they dished out at the start of lecture theatres. If you were a GY, you probably won't even be able to imagine how clunky that must have been, but it was before phones. Nobody had smartphones with apps and things. Well, now, it's, it's embedded into the, a lot of the systems that we use, like Zoom. Here's one here that I made up earlier. So, you've just been invited to take part in a poll, it's popped up somewhere on your screen, and you've got a couple of questions there. So I'll just keep it open for about a minute, easy questions. Everybody found it? Can you nod if you've found it? You found the poll? Yep, you're able to see it, and so you can take part in that poll. And again, another way to prompt people to be engaged, in a fairly safe way, can work quite well too with larger groups. We can use this in lots of different ways. We can use this to just encourage engagement and interactive, sort of lift people's energy up by the fact that they're having to do something, and, and, you know, bring a bit of lightness to it, like the first question. And the second question, I've used it in a way to prompt some reflection about how I normally do things, and maybe how I might like to do things differently in the future. So we could start with this poll, and then go on to a group activity around it. So I'm going to end polling now, don't worry if you didn't have a get to have a go, and now I'm going to share the results with you. I can't see what you can see. What can you see? Are you seeing the questions with some bars against them? So I am seeing, I am seeing what you're saying. Great. So you can just get a sense of, wow, where are, where are most of my classmates, classmates at with those things? Now, you might also notice that on the second question, who was entirely clear what Fee meant by explaining, showing, asking and creating? It was a bit vague, it was a bit abstract, but that's okay, if I'm using it as questions to prompt reflection. So when they, you're gonna, let's say you then went on into small groups, and you discussed what, explained yourself, how you answered that question, to the people in the small groups. So that's an example of using kind of two different parts of technology in sequence to go for, to, to grade exposure, and to grade the level of reflection. When you discuss and explain it in the small group, you're going to come to a deeper level of reflection, and then I could push that out even further, by getting people to come back from the small groups, share it in the large group, and, and then we kind of, and I, you know, could influence that discussion as the, as the teacher as well. So you're in my cardiac rehab group, and I could influence that discussion towards ways of getting over some of those barriers around getting more exercise and eating a healthier diet. Another way that it can be used is, polls could be used, is to gamify things. I don't know if Mindy, my fabulous PhD student, who's been at many of these sessions, who, this is really in her heartland, she's been teaching me about, is around lots of things around the use of technology in healthcare, but also the idea of gamifying things. Now, in some ways, it's sort of every mother's nightmare for their teenager, that they're really encouraging gaming, but what it does do, the idea of gamifying is, creates really high levels of investment or, or learning by turning, turning the learning activity into a game. Now, hands up, using your reactions button, hands up if you've, you, you've created a game as part of a learning thing in groups already. Maybe you have like a bingo board for healthy lifestyle options, or something else like that. Yep. So a few people are using that already. So one thing that we did in, in teaching the other night was we, we were looking at health, health systems, the economics of rehabilitation and health systems, pretty dry topic to make really fun, dynamic and interactive. And we put everybody on a cruise ship, and said, "You're on this cruise ship, and you're going to be struck, you've got to create a new identity on this cruise ship, guidance around that", and you've got, then somebody is assailed with this health, unexpected health event. Actually, quite a few of them contracted COVID-19, as it turned out, during this game, and then, in the game, inside the game. And then they were to go to a new country to get their healthcare needs met. And so we used the poll, you can just randomly have a go, you, you were going to end up in Saudi, Germany or Sweden, and I just taught them about these different types of health funding systems in these countries represented it. So the students had to, at that point, before I said, "You're going to be sent to one of these three countries for your healthcare", I stopped them there, they're fully immersed, they're feeling the sea air on their faces, and they, I said, "What country are you hoping you go to?" So they're deep in the experience of being on the receiving end of the results of the way that a health system is designed. Very powerful way to, to immerse somebody and give them an experience of something like health economics, give them an experience of what that is like, rather than keeping it the sort of academic exercise. No takers for Saudi today. Though I hear it is actually a really fascinating place, but maybe not where you want to go when you've got a sudden unexpected health condition. Okay, so there's an example of polls. Right, let's go, yep, let's, great. Now, what we're going to do now is we're going to go to breakout rooms again, in just a moment, we'll stick with the same room, so you can see the same faces you had before. No, I'll have to recreate rooms because there's a bunch of people came after that. And you're going to use the whiteboard. No, I have to recreate rooms because there's a bunch of people came after that. And you're going to use the whiteboard. First of all, what I want you to do is brainstorm, this is, this is a modeled activity, right? I want you to brainstorm words that come to you that describe. Your vision of really effective rehabilitation. So you can put those into the chat box now. Not everybody has to put something in the chat box, but just make a note, what are some words that come to mind when you think about really effective rehabilitation? Can be really useful too, to think about when you've received really effective rehabilitation or healthcare. What, how would you describe that in just a couple of words? Okay, you've got those words in mind? Now, I'm going to break you out into small groups in just a minute and I want you to share what the, some of these ideas are. And as a small group, I want you to come to. An understanding of what some of the, the shared ideas are within the group, focusing in on the, the ideals for rehabilitation that you have in common. And then I want you to draw it on the whiteboard without using any text. So the way that you draw things on the whiteboard is you, only one person in the group has to do it. So if you're already feeling your heart beating because this is a real stretch for you technology-wise, don't worry, there'll be somebody like Anya in your group. Who is really savvy with technology, was born after the internet was invented and will be really comfortable with this. To get to the whiteboard, you need to click share screen at the bottom of your screen. Don't, yeah, so if you click share screen, can you see that? The green box with the arrow? Yeah. So if you click it, it's okay to click it. You won't automatically be sharing things. A bunch of options come up. If you've got multiple pages open on your computer, thanks Lucy, you didn't need to actually share the screen Lucy. And if you click it, one of those options is whiteboard. So some of them are pages that you've got open and one of the options is whiteboard. That's all right, Siri, you can stop sharing now. And on that screen. You, is what you're going to draw with. Now there's a bunch of annotation tools that you can use. And everybody in the group can do the drawing, but one person is going to open up the whiteboard. Make sure that person is a bit, is pretty techno-comfortable. It's not, it's not too big a deal, but we, we don't want to, we're just trying it out. So. When you share your screen, so you've created this picture about your idea of a good rehabilitation and. Just do a print screen. The person who's whiteboarded does do a print screen and then you could share it back with the main group later on. So John Feeny, you can stop sharing your screen with the whole group at the moment. And we will break out into small groups. So I'm going to recreate groups. Recreate groups. Yep, recreate all rooms. Open room. So you've got to be up five minutes. So it's got to, oh, maybe five, seven minutes, going to be kind of. Speed, speed discussion, speed drawing, have a bit of a play around with it. Everyone's not actually going to share their things. So just have a play around. Think about a metaphor as, as something in your image as well, might be useful too. Just click record again. Only a host can set up a poll and I'm not sure if it's an option on all the versions. So it might not be an option on the free version. It's something that you need to set up before the meeting as well. Doesn't necessarily take a long time, but. You do ahead. There's also quite a lot in terms of polls, I'm, I'm going to ask some people to share their whiteboard in just a moment. But in regards to polls, there's actually quite a lot of web-based platforms that you can use. If anybody's familiar with any of those, you could pop them up in the chat box. There's, there's a, there's a wide variety of them. That do the same sort of thing. If you happen to be using Zoom, it's already built into Zoom, but there are other options as well. So you're not dependent on Zoom. So did anybody, hands up if you managed to do a print screen of your. Picture, anybody got their picture that they want to and are able to share? Who was that? Somebody was starting to try to do it. So did you, you have to have saved it. If you go to open up that whiteboard again, now that we're back in the main group, it's private to that breakout room. Unless you saved it, it won't be there. And you save it by going print screen and then you can't, which is basically copying, copy paste, copying that. Screen and then you could paste it into a Word document. Brilliant. Who would like to talk us through this in 30 seconds or less? Team talk.
Okay. Um, so this is the, our little breakout room number 11's picture. So we were saying that the, doing the weights with the guy in the wheelchair was. Not particularly engaging and not particularly fun and not particularly functional for him. And so his engagement in that process was not that great. And as OTs, we would really love to. Find more meaningful occupations, i.e. loving, um, gardening and cooking instead.
Very good. I'll leave you there, Krista. I'm sure you've got lots more that you could share and discuss about that. I noticed that you've used a lot of colour on your good rehabilitation side and the, and blah, blah, blah. So you might do, just do things like that to sort of draw out the conversation, the reflection. You could stop sharing now if you like, around that kind of activity.
Fiona, just a question. You said that when you set up your whiteboard, that other people can also draw on the whiteboard in your group?
Yes.
We couldn't manage to do that. Could you just explain how to do that? How do, how do the participants draw on the same whiteboard?
The person who set up the whiteboard, I think that there's a dropdown thing in the.
Okay.
What's it called? It's got a funny name. In the bar that appears, there's a dropdown thing and it's sheer annotate. This is sheer annotate. Sorry, I didn't explain that.
Okay.
Can I say that that happened in our group? And at the top, when it says sheer screen beside it is a little black thing that says view options. If you click in the view options, but it comes down as an annotate then, if you couldn't find it.
Oh, great. Thank you. Yep, go on.
Okay, so we could stop sharing screens now. We're just about at time and I'm going to wrap up the today's presentation. So thanks very much for that. There was another question around. Chat functions during the breakout room. I'm not entirely sure if you can chat within the breakout room. But if you can, it doesn't translate back into the main group. You can't use the main chat box. I don't think you can actually. You can't use the main chat box in the breakout room. So you can see what was posted before the breakout, but you can't see afterwards. You can, anything I post during, once the breakout rooms have opened up. Now little details like that, there is lots of fantastic. Newbie oriented resources on. The website, on the web and in particular, look for, make sure that the links you're going to is, is. Hosted by the company of the software that you're using. If you want the most direct source of information. There are a lot of people advertising things and trying to get cookies and stuff on your computer that make these kinds of, that make the immediate things on, that pop up on a search. Look attractive, but actually they're just trying to sell you something. But certainly Zoom in particular has got very good user-friendly information. So I'm just going to share a last couple of wee slides with you, these, just so you kind of know. And these are going to be available elsewhere. So here's a bunch, some of the resources that I've discussed today. That are ways that you can encourage really high engagement and interactive group work. That we've used is very, very Google-able. Now, a lot of people, one thing that you could use in your work, but you could also, you can also, we've created for this learning forum here. People have talked about how valuable that Bulle found the discussions, the small group discussions. And they're wondering about ways of continuing, you know, some of those relationships and having other forums for those discussions. So we've created a closed Facebook page. I think that you will, sorry, a Facebook group. And here's the link. And, and it's closed, but to get into it, you ask, you have to answer, what does R T I U stand for? Which is my employer, who has provided these sessions, which is the Rehabilitation Teaching and Research Unit. Google it if you can't remember that. And if you click in that, then, then that's a forum that you can create. And so you can. The networks developed in the, your group can extend beyond the actual therapist contact time of the group. So that's one way that can, that can occur. You, you could do that. There are lots of other tools as well. And some of your choices depends on how secure you want that platform to be. Another thing that we've used during the series of presentations is Word Cloud. It's free. It's a web-based, don't need to download anything. And I use that to present back to you the things that you'd said were most important to you and a really good IT guy. And a range of YouTube links and a very, very funny video on what the, in real life conference calls would look like. Next week. Again, if you are watching this as a recording, go, go, those links are still live around Air Table for posting. Your experiences of telly, telly health delivery and you can start to feel part of the community. And of course, anybody is welcome to join that, that Facebook group that I just mentioned. Next week, we are focusing on how we might measure outcomes in telly delivery and, yeah, next week. And using technology and through technology sessions. We're also going to have a drop-in guest visitor from Jeff Ormandy. He is the IT guy you always wanted to have. Who is the guru on video conferencing at the University of Atago. So we've gone right to the top of the tree. And he's a very good IT communicator. And so he's going to be joining us next week for any particular questions. So this is for you. If you've gone past that initial stage stuff, you've had a bit of a look for an answer, haven't found an easy answer. This is an opportunity and a forum to be able to pose some questions to him. Email them to me beforehand if you want to, and so that I can give him some preparation as well. So that's it from us at the R T I U. Thanks very much. Share, share the kindness if you valued, valued the, the talk today. Want you to go forth and share some of that love in whatever way you can with other people. If, if it's money, if money's what works for you is the easiest thing to do, then by all means, make a donation to the O T N Z Research and Education Fund. Keep those, those connections that open to you. It's been fantastic to get to know you all again. So I'll say goodbye, kakite ono and go, keep on doing your good work.
Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Thanks Fee, kakite.
Thanks a lot. Much appreciated Fee, they've been great.